Divisive concepts, I mean, what does that mean exactly? Divisive for whom?
Have a real hard-on it, hard-on it, hard-on it.
It's awful.
I don't want to reiterate your question verbatim.
On this episode of Pod Virginia.
The world is only as cruel as our institutions make it.
We're joined by Fairfax County School Board Chairwoman Stella Pekarsky.
That's a big win.
And Fairfax County School Board Member Laura Jane Cohen.
Should a nurse practitioner and a cybersecurity expert decide educational curriculum?
We talk about advanced math, school resource officers, and we get an explanation of privilege bingo.
We blew it on this one.
Plus, we talk about why reporters bum rush lawmakers in between meetings, the unsuccessful attempt to ban publicly regulated utilities from making campaign contributions, and why universities hold transcripts hostage because of unpaid debt.
They find ways to nickel and dime you.
All that, and we read the room on this episode of Pod Virginia.
Look, look around you, Governor, you're in Alexandria. Read the room, buddy.
I'm Michael Pope.
I'm Thomas Bowman.
And this is Pod Virginia, the podcast that takes you inside Virginia politics.
Later in the show, we'll be joined by not one, but two members of the Fairfax County School Board, Chairwoman Stella Pekarsky and Springfield District School Board Member Laura Jane Cohen. They'll explain why their public school system believes it's important to educate on diversity, equity, and inclusion, a correct response to a bill that would have banned teaching inherently divisive concepts in the classroom. Plus, they address a misunderstanding that erupted over advanced math. See what I did there? And they'll explain why they don't want unfunded mandates from the General Assembly that would require elementary schools to have uniformed law enforcement officers.
Okay, let's get to the news. Colleges and universities should not be able to prevent students from accessing transcripts because of unpaid debt. That's the idea behind a bill introduced by Senator Gazala Hashmi, a Democrat from Richmond.
Students who can't access their transcripts often have to repeat courses again at a transfer institution because they can't prove that they have successfully completed their coursework.
Now, her bill passed the Senate with a bipartisan vote, including four Republicans. Now, most Republicans, though, sided with Minority Leader Tommy Norman.
We are trying to impart on them that they're going through a transition in life where they have to accept additional responsibility. Part of that additional responsibility is financial responsibility.
Get off my lawn, Thomas. Shout out to my friend and colleague Megan Polly of VPM, who documented this problem in a series of stories titled Dreams Deferred. Now, her series, Dreams Deferred, you should totally check it out. It revealed how direct-to-school debt creates hardships for students, often making it difficult for them to complete their degrees and advance their careers. Now, Thomas, this issue of the transcripts has really been an interesting window into the behavior of colleges and universities across Virginia. Like, what's the point of holding up a transcript for a few dollars here or there? We're talking about institutions that have huge endowments in many cases.
Yeah, and it's big business because there are over 50,000 people who are having their transcripts withheld.
Yeah, and there's an interesting twist here, too, because these colleges and universities, when they're trying to get the money, oftentimes they end up handing the debt cases over to the Attorney General's Office. And the AG's office actually has specific, like, debt collector attorneys. That's kind of what they do. They specialize in collecting debt from people. And there's a quirk here in the law that Megan uncovered, which is so strange. It would, the law allows the Attorney General's Office to keep 30% of the money that's collected, so in these unpaid debts. And so the sort of straightforward way to do that would be to collect $1,000 and for the AG's office to pull out, like, $300. But that's actually not the way the AG's office has been doing it. Instead, they've been calculating the dollar amount for that 30% and then tacking that on as an additional fee. That's what Herring's office did. After Megan Polly's excellent series came out, Mieres said, well, 30% is too high. Let's go down to 15%. So the current AG is doing something better than the previous AG did, but he's still calculating the 15% and adding that on, which is a hardship for people. I mean, like, these are oftentimes, as we heard from Senator Hashmi in that clip, sometimes students end up having to repeat classes because they don't have access to their transcripts.
That's right. And the reason that students fall into this situation is something happens, like, they lose a scholarship, or they have to go back home for a family emergency and drop out for the semester or the year or whatever. You know, life happens. It's not necessarily related to grades or academic performance, but if you leave college, then you owe the money that, any loans that you'd gotten, that you have to pay those back. And they find ways to, well, nickel and dime you, I guess. But this is chump change for the state and for schools with these large endowments. So this is really, to me, just unjust and unmerciful. And, you know, the world is only as cruel as our institutions make it. So to me, this is low-hanging fruit to make the world a little bit better place.
It will be interesting to see what happens with the lobbying efforts here from colleges and universities, because you would imagine that they don't particularly like Hashmi's bill. And, you know, will they be able to exert influence, maybe even behind-the-scenes influence, on this bill? It does have some Republican support. It actually passed with a bipartisan vote in the Senate. So I guess we'll see what happens when it gets over to the House. All right, now, on a different topic, members of the House and Senate are rejecting legislation that would prohibit public utilities from making campaign contributions. It's an idea that's long been championed by Senator Chat Peterson of Fairfax City. Now, when he was presenting this idea to the Privileges and Elections Committee, a kind of a strange thing happened. Check out this line of questioning from Senator Lionel Spruill.
Do you really, really have a real hard-on and dislike for dominion? Because it's not to me, it's a personal thing with you, but dominion. I can see what you're trying to do. It makes sense. But I'm saying, but the way you're talking, like, you just have a real hard-on against dominion. Is it, is it personal against dominion? Are you trying to do what's right? Or is this something that you dislike for dominion because you don't like them?
You know, I don't want to reiterate your question verbatim. But, you know, I can honestly say, Senator Spruill, that I don't have any animosity towards anybody. I mean, maybe in my life, I've been lucky. I've been married to a beautiful woman. I got great kids. I have no animosity towards anybody. I will just tell you this, though. I have practiced law in this field. No other state in the Union has the public utility make donations to state lawmakers. We are unique.
Now, when Spruill said what he said there, the first time he used that phrase, you see it, you saw a lot of people in the committee room sort of look around and like, did he really say what I thought I heard him just say? And then, Thomas, he said it a second time. So clearly, this was premeditated, and he meant to use this expression, which is odd, I have to say. In terms of the actual legislation, you know, Senator Peterson has tried this year after year after year, and he was inspired by the kind of Obama-era events where these utility companies were able to keep their excess profits and not be forced to return them because of what might happen with Obama-era regulation, which, as it turns out, didn't transpire. But in any event, Senator Peterson has tried this several times. And I think the sticking point has always been, is this really constitutional to tell one kind of contributor, you are no longer able to contribute? Chat Peterson seems to think it is. There are many senators on both sides of the aisle who don't.
I personally don't believe that any companies should be able to make contributions. Actually, I personally believe in publicly funded elections. But as far as the ideological consistency on this, the State Corporation Commission regulates industries that are, go well beyond just public utilities. And you're talking about insurance companies, agents, agencies, exchange assisters, financial companies, like banks, securities, and retail franchising. Public utility companies also includes railroads and accounting and finance. So to be ideologically consistent with the true desire to want to prevent regulated industries from influencing their regulators, which I certainly sympathize with, you got to be a little more expansive than just energy companies. Because I, like most Virginians, say that it's not right to single out one company and the 20,000 people who work there.
You know, you bring up this issue of there are lots of businesses that are regulated by the State Corporation Commission that make political contributions. If you think about, like, the predatory lending industry, I spent years examining the inner workings of the predatory lending business. And, you know, LoanMax and TitleMax and all those, the bigger ones, they all made political contributions. And they were also all regulated by the SEC. So, I mean, if the standard that we're trying to set is it's not a good idea for businesses that are regulated by the state to make political contributions that might influence how they're regulated, then there are a lot of businesses that would fall under that.
Yeah, there is a difference between industries and businesses and regulated industries and businesses, right? So healthcare is heavily regulated, banking is heavily regulated, railroads, most transportation is heavily regulated, and of course, energy is heavily regulated. So if you're going to single out just one segment of it because you don't like their political contribution, or you don't like what they're trying to do with their money, okay, and I can sympathize with that, but they just happen to be at the top of the list right now. In the past, it has been railroads and tobacco companies and the NRA. And it comes and goes, is my point. Michael, there's another item in the news. You're that item. You were quoted by Patrick Wilson of the Richmond Times-Dispatch, and the story had the headline, "Press Groups Concerned After Virginia Senator Publicly Attacks Reporter Who Asked Her Questions." Michael, you're quoted in the story saying, "Members of the press need to have the ability to ask lawmakers questions in between meetings, with or without having reached out to their offices first. It's an essential part of holding legislators accountable." Great quote, by the way.
It's not often I'm quoted, Thomas. It was actually a very strange thing for me to be quoted in the newspaper. But yeah, so like, the backstory here is Ned Oliver of the Virginia Mercury was putting together a excellent story. The story dropped after the Richmond Times-Dispatch story that had to do with cannabis products that were being sold by the shop that's owned by Luis Lucas. So he was asking her about products that are for sale in this shop that she owns. And clearly, there was some tension between the reporter trying to ask her questions in between the meetings and the senator, whose aides kept saying, well, you know, to Ned Oliver, send us an email, like, send us an email with your questions. And Ned Oliver wanted to ask his questions. And so it was important for the Virginia Capitol Correspondents Association to stand up for the ability of reporters to ask questions in between meetings. You know, like, in fact, I responded to several people. That's literally why I'm in Richmond during the sessions, because if I just wanted to stream the committee meetings from my office, you know, that would be one thing. But I'm there to get in their faces and ask them questions in between meetings. And sometimes that gets uncomfortable. I remember one time I was pressing Dick Saslaw on contributions that he had received from predatory lenders as he was on his way to a committee meeting where they were going to talk about car title lending. And he didn't want to answer those questions, and he got really angry at me, and we had a very tense exchange. But this is what happens in Richmond. So it was just, that quote there was in the context of me speaking as president of the Virginia Capitol Correspondents Association. And the quote was actually heavily workshopped between the executive committee of the Virginia Capitol Correspondents Association, which consists, Thomas, by the way, of two of our former guests, Brad Cutner of Courthouse News Service and Jackie DeFusco. And so, yeah, like, lots of drama with the lead-up to that, to Ned Oliver's story, and then Ned Oliver's reporting, which is fascinating. So you should definitely take a minute to check all that out.
Never a good idea to attack the press. Certainly don't do it. But don't attack the press where, like, on Twitter. It's a little reminiscent of Donald Trump. You know, don't, don't do it.
I think the Luis Lucas people believed that Ned Oliver was rude or aggressive or hostile. You know, I, and even if that's true.
He would be well within his rights under the First Amendment.
Members of the press have every right to do that, right?
Yeah, even if it's not true, but even if it were true, you can say whatever you want to an elected official.
And, and it's important to note here, the elected official also can say anything they want, right? So like, Luis Lucas had every right to go on Twitter and attack the reporter. So like, it's every, this is a free speech argument that goes full circle. Everybody really has the free speech rights to ask the question, even if it's a hostile question, the reporter has every right. And then, you know, the elected official also has every right to go on Twitter and criticize the reporter, too.
Yeah, and just because you have the right to open your mouth doesn't mean you should. And it's just never a good look. It's never well-received when you see an elected official attacking a member of the press, even if it's true. So it kind of doesn't matter. Even if Ned Oliver were the worst reporter in the history of reporters and worked for, I don't know, like, OAN, who just got banned from DirecTV, it wouldn't matter because of the public's general respect for the freedom of the press, even in the age we currently live in, where that's been under fire from people like Donald Trump. But Michael, because we're talking to members of Fairfax County's Public Schools School Board, they were a member of a lawsuit, along with Arlington, Alexandria, and a few other localities, seven total Virginia school boards who wanted their universal masking policy to remain in place. Well, they prevailed in court when an Arlington judge granted their request for a temporary restraining order against Yonkin's executive order. The court ruled Yonkin lacked the unilateral authority to interfere in local school district policy. Michael, score one for the separation of powers.
I was going to say, score one for local governments. You know, I mean, if you think about local school board across Virginia, they guard their powers jealously, and they should. And, you know, the school board members across Virginia and superintendents across Virginia saw what the governor was doing and said, wait now, hold up a second. What happens at our school system is our call. It's not the, the governor can't waltz into the executive mansion and tell every school what they should be doing with their health policy. You know, it'd be like a totally different thing if the governor was saying, you need to take these steps to be more healthy. But the governor was saying, you need to take these steps that might endanger the health of your students. And so, score one for local authority.
Sure, yeah, it's in the Constitution. It also happens to be in violation of the Code of Virginia. And, but something else happened on COVID in Alexandria, Michael, and that was Governor Yonkin failing to read the room. What happened in Alexandria?
So Governor Yonkin was doing an event at a Safeway in Alexandria when he was heckled by a loud Alexandrian who basically said to him, "Wear a mask. You know, this is Alexandria. Read the room." So it's, it's so funny because I'm just, when I heard that, I thought, you know, I don't know the identity of this woman. If we ever are able to track down the identity of this woman, she will be a huge star in Alexandria. And I was, actually, I was, I was, I saw the mayor the day all of this happened, who was actually in Richmond for a sort of local government day. And I said to the mayor of Alexandria, you know, if you ever track down the identity of this woman, I can envision a scenario where the mayor, like, calls her up to give her a key to the city or something, right? So just, this sort of totally aligns with Alexandria's thoughts about the importance of wearing masks in places like Safeway.
It's a quintessential Alexandria Ravel moment. And by the way, before we go and move on to our interview, shout out to Brandon Jarvis at the Virginia Scope. He had a great story about Joe Morrissey being censured by the Richmond City Democratic Committee because he threatened a member of the local NAACP with physical harm. He apparently has a history with this person, and they don't get along. But Joe, in response, called the local committee, quote, "They're a bunch of young, white, entitled wannabe wokes who took a break tonight from spray painting people's homes, setting fire to the city, and smashing windows in order to censure me for simply defending the honor of my wife. They have spent the last two years whining incessantly about their insufficient stimulus checks and unsuccessful efforts to defund the police. But on the other hand, I've spent my last two years ending the death penalty, establishing mental health dockets, banning chokeholds, and increasing the minimum wage. All of my bills. Who do you think has been more successful?" Well, I'll tell you what's not successful, attacking the base of your electorate. What the heck? What's going on, Michael?
Morrissey is so colorful, the most colorful member of the General Assembly, I think. You could do a whole podcast just about Joe Morrissey. You know, I mean, like, I, I remember one of the first sessions that I was ever there covering it, he was in the House, and he was serving a jail sentence, but they let him out during the day so that he could come to the House floor to be a lawmaker during the day. And there are many, many twists and turns in the career of Joe Morrissey, who has now emerged, by the way, as like, the most important guy in the Senate, because as the swing vote, he is holding the cards for so many things, including the potential nomination of Andrew Wheeler as the Environmental Secretary.
Yeah, well, add that one to the list, I guess.
All right, let's take a break. When we come back, we'll be joined by two members of the Fairfax County School Board. They'll explain what the heck happened with privilege bingo and why it went so wrong. We'll also talk about advanced math, school resource officers, and the inherently divisive concepts of inherently divisive concepts. We'll be right back.
Hi, this is Delegate Lopez. You're listening to Pod Virginia with Tom Bowman and Michael Pope, the best podcast about Virginia politics in the history of mankind and podcasts.
And we're back on Pod Virginia, and we're joined by the Chairwoman of the Fairfax County School Board, Stella Pekarsky. Thanks for joining us.
Happy to be here.
We're also joined by Fairfax County School Board Member Laura Jane Cohen of the Springfield District. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
All right, Stella, let's start by talking about advanced math. Now, on the campaign trail, Republicans kept talking about how liberals wanted to abolish advanced math. Explain to us exactly what is the Math Pathways Initiative, and why does Yonkin want to cancel it?
Well, thank you for that question. When this first came out, I had the opportunity to speak to a math professor from one of the local universities who was working on this team and doing kind of the, the every seven-year review of math curriculum. And the way he had explained this Math Pathways Initiative to me was that this group was really looking towards how they could modernize the way we were teaching math to students so that they would be prepared for whatever pathways they chose after high school. For example, if they were looking to get into the field of, say, you know, economics or some technology field, that they would really hone into this curriculum that was structured in a way that it would provide them with the skills and the opportunities to be prepared for that pathway and next step.
So are we talking about advanced math? Like, what is the relation here between advanced math and Math Pathways Initiative?
Sure. So at one point, there was, I believe, this misconception in the public that the Math Pathways Initiative would actually eliminate advanced math. And we did, you know, like I said, I spoke to this professor, and the Department of Ed came out and said that that was not the intention of the Math Pathways Initiative in any way, that advanced math courses would still be available to students, and that this was really looking at how we organize math curriculum to meet the skill set that students would need when they went to post-secondary schooling.
Stella, I'm hearing you that it wasn't the intention, but was it the outcome? Did the Math Pathways Initiative actually functionally get rid of advanced math in any way whatsoever?
Not to my knowledge, and it never came to fruition because that working group was still in the process of looking at, you know, this math curriculum, and that was halted.
All right, let's move on to a topic that's triggering to a lot of people right now, white privilege, specifically the privilege walks. And Laura Jane, I'll throw this to you. What exactly is a privilege walk? And why do people get so freaked out about it?
Well, boy, I'm not sure that I can answer the latter half of that question because I'm not sure what's so terrifying about kind of trying to take a walk back and figure out how things came to be. So, you know, when, when we think back to maybe how you or I learned about the Declaration of Independence or the Constitution, it was very factual. Here we were in Philadelphia, and here were all these folks, and there was a lot of discussion about what was at stake and what were we, you know, arguing about. But in all honesty, I don't feel like, and maybe coming from Marietta, Georgia, it's slightly different than in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but there was not context. And so part of a privilege walk is looking at, as we look at some pretty foundational things, so foundational documents, foundational historical figures, Supreme Court cases, you know, all kinds of things that happened in our history. How do you set what was happening and contextualize in that time? So, so who are the people in power? You know, what do they look like? What kinds of things did they have their, in, at their disposal? Were they people of means? How did what came out on paper, how was it a result of their life experiences? So if I'm a white male landowner who is wealthy, what, what's my frame of mind and my mindset as I go into creating the kinds of documents for a country and laws that I want to see? And I think that's really important. It doesn't take away from the importance of these documents, historical importance of these documents. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't tarnish, I think, things that were very important in our history. But to give context as to why the Declaration of Independence ultimately, in the final draft, doesn't talk about race, you know, doesn't talk about gender, it's important to understand why that might be.
Laura Jane, I like how you reference the Founding Fathers, because founder's intent is often a term of legal art. And what you're saying is that these privilege walks help people understand what the founder's intent was, which they'll refer back to and use from a point of better understanding later on.
Sure, you know, and I think even to be able to contextualize, A Tour of Monticello is not the same as it was 20 years ago. Does it diminish the historical significance that Thomas Jefferson played in our country and in the founding of our country? Absolutely not. Does it contextualize, you know, why some things might have come out the way they did? I mean, you got to look at the whole history, just we have these conversations about how you teach to the whole child. You know, I think it's a shame to just gloss over and pretend like that didn't matter.
Let's go to the bingo hall. Now, what the heck is privilege bingo? Fairfax County schoolchildren have played bingo with squares for things like white and Christian. One of the squares that seemed to outrage a lot of parents was calling privilege bingo for military kid. So are military kids a privileged class? And what kind of game is privilege bingo, anyway? Republicans really feel like privilege bingo is an ace card for them. Is it?
You know, I think, one, just to give some context, since I just talked about how important that is. You know, I don't, I think it's not accurate to say that kids all over Fairfax County were playing this. We certainly know that it happened in one particular classroom. We were able to really quickly get to the root of where that came from. And, you know, I'll be honest, there's, we spent last year working to really quickly develop an awful lot of materials, especially asynchronous materials that teachers could use in this crazy pandemic. And some of it meant that it was rushed, some of it meant that our normal processes and procedures where we put eyes on everything was not as crisp because everybody was all hands on deck. So I will honestly say, look, there's a statement on the FCPS website. We blew it on this one. And, you know, there's an awful lot of better ways to have these really important conversations that don't, A, ostracize kids and make, making a game out of it is not, you know, ideal, I wouldn't say in any way. But the other piece certainly is the idea that military kids are subject to some privilege is just, it's, it's, it's just not accurate. It's awful. And any person who has gotten to spend their life, my, my grandfather was in the Merchant Marines, my uncle was in the Marines. I'm really fortunate to have a best friend who's a military wife and to watch what families and kids go through, through each deployment, through each goodbye, to each hello of trying to reintegrate, of leaving friends and family and teachers and everything they know every few years, you know, for the 1% to serve the 99%. few years, you know, for the 1% to serve the 99%. You tell me how that's privilege. So I understand the heartburn. Boy, I wish I could tell you, there's a world in which we never screw up. That's just not true. So we're, certainly have apologized and are reaching out and, and making sure that there's ways that we can let our military families and, and kids in particular know that that's, that's not how we feel about service in FCPS.
Well, it's really great that you put it into perspective like that, because this is an issue that is going to be politicized and run on different partisan media, left and right, all day long. And so getting it from the source, getting it from the school board members and the chair, is fascinating context. So thank you for that background. And now, Stella, let's talk about school resource officers.
Sure.
Fairfax County currently has law enforcement officials inside all of the high schools and all of the middle schools. But a new unfunded mandate is under consideration that would force school resource officers into all the elementary schools in Fairfax County. That's well more than 100 elementary schools. The bill would force all those schools to have a law enforcement officer on campus as a school resource officer. Is that an expense that the county can afford?
No, to put it, you know, very clearly, no, it's not. I mean, that, that's a massive amount of money. And, and quite honestly, in all the ways that we could utilize our resources, this is not the best way to do so. And, you know, all unfunded mandates are an issue, and no matter what they are, but this one in particular, I mean, man, especially in this post-COVID, or almost post-COVID, if you will, world, there sure are better ways that we can utilize the money that we have with all the needs that our students have. And that is not officers in our elementary schools right now.
So I want to move on to inherently divisive concepts now. This is a part of the Glenn Yonkin Day One Agenda, Game Plan, Legislative Agenda, New Year's Resolution, Honeydew List. So the governor gave this bill to Republican Senator Jen Kiggins of Virginia Beach. She's carrying the bill to prohibit what the legislation calls inherently divisive concepts from schools across Virginia. So like, what exactly is an inherently divisive concept? The bill introduced by Senator Kiggins defines that as anything that violates the Civil Rights Act of 1964. So Laura Jane Cohen, should Jim Crow be expelled from the curriculum?
Well, you know, we could start with, like, should a nurse practitioner and a cybersecurity expert decide educational curriculum? I could easily answer that one for you. Look, it's just absurd on its face. I don't know how deep you really need to dive to say the subjective nature of what is divisive and the idea that even concepts that maybe we all agree were divisive, civil rights movement certainly being one of them, who better than our state-certified educators who learn how to teach our kids about these incredibly important seminal events in our history? Who better than teachers to teach kids about this? I mean, good gracious, from the revolution, you know, from the Revolutionary War on, what big moment in our history is not considered divisive? I mean, it's just absurd. It's, it's hardly worth the effort to elevate it to something that's, that's real, because it's so absurd.
And Laura Jane, if I can jump in, I'm glad how you, you know, talked about our educators, because really, what's our goal of education, right? We wanna, we wanna create critical thinkers. We want our students to ask questions and, and look at different perspectives. And, you know, divisive concepts, I mean, what does that mean exactly in the context of what we're doing? Divisive for whom?
Is there anything else going on that you want to plug or celebrate that Fairfax County Public Schools are doing?
That's a great question. Yeah, I mean, it has been obviously a very difficult couple of years for our students and our families. I mean, they've had to endure a lot. And, you know, getting all kids back in school at the beginning of this year, that was big. And keeping them safe and keeping our COVID numbers under control. I mean, that's a big win. Kids need to be in the classroom, they need to be with their teachers, they need to be with each other. And our educators have been working overtime since, you know, for the last couple of years, but particularly from when the school started this year, to kind of re-acclimate kids to the classroom environment, to look and identify where that unfinished learning or where some of those learning gaps exist and, and really work on those. And that, I mean, I am, I'm super proud of the work that our staff has done and their dedication to our students. Laura Jane?
Oh, I agree. And I, I think the, there are these huge wins daily that we get to see. You know, we have kids who are excelling at levels that are just remarkable, who are doing things like naming historical markers, you know, after African-American citizens who've been really influential in an area where predominantly, as you drove down some of our highways, you saw Confederate, you know, odes to the Confederacy. And now we're looking at, at real Virginia history and a lot of the successes. We have kids who are winning awards at regional and state levels, in sports, in academics, in art, in all kinds of things. And those are wins every day. And I think Stella's right, the big victory is we get to see, as school board members, kids showing up every day and with smiles and hidden under their masks, I understand, but smiling eyes.
In their eyes.
And kids who just say, you know, when we ask them, hey, you know, how's it going this year? And they're all thumbs up, all thumbs up, happy to be there, ready to learn, even though it's hard. They're engaged and they're just doing such amazing things. I'm blown away every time I'm in a classroom.
This has been a really great conversation. Stella Pekarsky, Laura Jane Cohen, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
From Steve Artley Studios.
It's time for Privy Tic Tac Bingo, the fast-paced game where players try to guess the elements that constitute privilege. I'm your host, Darby White Tooth. Let's meet our players. A socialite from Winchester and author of the book, For Whom the Bell Ding-a-ling's, Princess Pauline Plush. A gossip blogger and stay-at-home single mother of eight from Dale City, Anita Bigman. And a self-described rat whisperer from Tenth City, under the 14th Street Bridge, Digger Dog Ditchwater. Players, you know the rules. A square will light up on the big board, and I'll read the statement appearing on the square. If the statement describes you, hit your buzzer. The corresponding square will light up in your column. The game moves quickly through the list until the first player to get a full line of squares across the board. That player wins the match. Okay, let's get started. Players, hands on your buzzers. Let's go. You are racially Caucasian. You are Christian. At school, you were involved in extracurricular activities. You feel comfortable walking alone at night. You were born in your country of residence. You are male. You were a military kid. You're a naturally. Oh, God, well, what do you know? Already, we appear to have a winner, and the winner is Digger Dog Ditchwater. Yay! Is this a surprise? Well, how did this happen? Come on, let's hear it for Digger Dog. He won by our rules. Bobby, why don't you tell us what Digger Dog has won?
Right, Darby. As winner of Privy Tic Tac Bingo, Digger has been identified as a person of privilege. We'll send him home with a three-volume set of DVDs for his continuing study on what it means to be privileged. You'll also get a free car wash, his very own Privy Tic Tac Bingo refrigerator magnet, Tea Cozy, and a large red armband that boldly identifies him as a person of privilege. And Digger, you'll also get the play-at-home version of Privy Tic Tac Bingo, so you and your friends can play anytime in the comfort of your own home.
Everybody, stop. Stop right now. Stop it. Holy crap. Are you kidding me? I have a stack of DVDs, no access to electrical power, I have no refrigerator in my trash-bag tent. A Tea Cozy? Seriously? Suppose I could try to sell the car wash coupon. Look, look, folks, I, I know you probably made well, I'm sure you do. Do you want to do something about the inequity of it all? Not just, not just entertain yourself with these little parlor games and thought experiments? Let everyone know at the club how enlightened you are and all that? Meanwhile, tell you what, you're all invited to my tent for a rousing session of The Minister's Cat, but with a twist. In this case, The Minister's Cat is the main course. You all have a great night.
Okay, well, there we have it. Congratulations, Digger Dog. Thanks to the other players and thanks to all of you for being with us. And be sure to stay tuned for What Color Is My Whiteness? The show where players navigate through a series of societal prisms to reveal the full spectrum of their privilege. This is Darby White Tooth. Goodbye.
Thank you for listening to this episode of Pod Virginia. Transcriptions are by Emily Cottrell. Satirical spots are written, performed, and produced by Steve Artley. Like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, subscribe to the show wherever you get your podcasts, and hey, consider writing a review on Apple Podcasts. It really helps people find the show. We'll be back again next week with the next episode of Pod Virginia.
Pod Virginia is a production of Jack Leg Media LLC.